Good morning, everyone. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Public Health and Environment Committee is now called to order. I am Councilwoman Felicia Porter, representing the 10th District and Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have, to my left, Councilman James Torrance from the 7th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And to my right, we also have Councilman Mark Parker from the 1st District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So before we get started, please take a moment to silence your cell phones. Today, the committee is holding a committee orientation to go over the rules and standard operating procedures for the committee, as well as inviting a few guests to speak on the vision of public health for our city and the committee. As a public health scientist by training, I am honored to chair the Public Health and Environment Committee. I'd like to thank my colleagues for being here and look forward to the transformational work that this committee will do over the next four years. I want to also thank community leaders that we have in attendance and public health experts that have joined us today. Your lived experiences, challenges, and ideas are essential to building the policies that are effective, inclusive, and sustainable. Public health is not a one-size-fits-all approach. It must be co-created with the people it serves. This morning, we will be conducting an orientation-style meeting of the committee, going over committee rules to discuss standard operating procedures for committee members, including sharing the mission of the committee, reviewing committee rules and expectation, and discussing the operations of the committee. As a committee, we have a responsibility to improve Baltimore's overall health by addressing the root causes that shape the well-being: access to healthcare, stable housing, and safe neighborhoods; economic opportunity and quality education for our community. The social determinants of health are not just abstract concepts; they are the everyday realities that determine whether families thrive or struggle. To create meaningful change, we must take a collaborative approach, working closely with our health, housing, planning departments, and deepening our relationships with city schools, local universities, hospitals, nonprofits, and state-level partners. The data is explicitly clear: some Baltimore communities rank among the most vulnerable in our state that demand urgent coordinated action. Currently, Baltimore faces significant public health challenges. Over 30% of our Black residents live in healthy food priority areas, limiting areas to fresh, nutritious food. The city's infant mortality rate is nearly twice that of the national average. And as we know, the opioid addiction has disproportionately impacted our city compared to the rest of the state, with an average of 866 opioid-related deaths per year in the city from 2017 to 2021. We must take urgent action to ensure that families have access to quality food, healthcare service, prioritize reproductive and behavioral health, and relieve communities from environmental burdens, and create conditions where every child grows up healthy and safe. Our vision is a future where public health is prioritized, community voices are uplifted, and strategic investments break down systemic barriers. This is more than just addressing today's challenges. It is about reshaping the very fabric of our city. Through meaningful policies, strategic investments, and strong partnerships, we have the opportunity to transform lives and create a city where every resident, no matter their zip code, has access to care, resources they need. We must take bold, decisive action to create a city that health equity is not just a goal but a reality. The work ahead is complex, and it's going to take a lot of risk, but it is also full of opportunity. Through collaboration and commitment, we can build a healthier future. Now, I'm going to turn it over to public testimony. I would like to invite those from University of Maryland to start us in public testimony.
Good morning, Chair Porter, Vice Chair Conway, and members of the Public Health and Environment Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Sam Samuel-Barris, and I'm honored to serve as the Director of External Affairs for University of Maryland Medical System. University of Maryland Medical System is a private academic-based regional health system dedicated to meeting the healthcare needs of Maryland diverse communities. As one of the largest private employers in the state of Maryland, we of our system employ close to 30,000 individuals and work with 4,600 affiliated providers to deliver comprehensive primary and specialty care across 11 hospitals, over 150 outpatient locations, and a network of University of Maryland Urgent Care Centers. Our flagship academic center campus, the University of Maryland Medical Center, is based in Baltimore and recognized regionally and nationally for excellence in specialized care, including the areas of trauma, cancer, and cardiology. We at University of Maryland Medical System deeply value our longstanding partnership with the city of Baltimore. Together, we share a commitment of expanding access to high-quality healthcare services for residents of Baltimore and across Maryland. Through this collaboration, we are continuously working to improve the health and well-being of our communities, addressing both immediate needs and long-term health disparities. Today, I am pleased to be joined by my colleagues Dr. Dana Farrakhan, Senior Vice President of Strategy, Community, and Business Development at University of Maryland Medical Center, and Dr. Islyn Moyer, Director of Ambulatory Nursing at University of Maryland Medical System. We appreciate the opportunity to participate in today's hearing and look forward to contributing to the important discussion. Dana?
Good morning, and to Chair Porter, Vice Chair Conway, and the members of the Public Health and Environmental Committee. As Sam mentioned, my name is Dana Farrakhan. I'm the Senior Vice President for Community Strategy and Business Development at the Medical Center. The University of Maryland Medical Center operates across two campuses, the downtown campus and our midtown campus, where we deliver high-quality patient-centered care and meets the diverse healthcare needs of Baltimore's communities. As a trusted healthcare institution, we are deeply committed to improving the health and well-being of our residents we serve. A key component of this commitment is our partnership with the Baltimore City Health Department on the Community Health Needs Assessment that we completed last year. This collaboration allows us to identify and address the most pressing healthcare needs and social determinants of health impacting Baltimore residents. Through the insights gained from what we call the CHNA, we develop and implement targeted programs and initiatives aimed at addressing health disparities, expanding access to care, and enhancing overall community well-being. As a result of the 2024 Community Health Needs Process, several critical community needs have been identified, including food access, housing, and transportation. Additionally, key healthcare priorities include access to care, chronic disease management with a focus on diabetes and hypertension, mental health and substance use disorders. Notably, violence has emerged as a significant public health issue, intersecting both public, social, and health categories. To address this challenge, UMMC and the Shock Trauma Center has been proud to partner with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement over the past two years to tackle the root causes of violence through a public health approach to intervention and prevention. This partnership is in a key component of the Mayor Scott's Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, which has contributed to a significant reduction in crime and violence across Baltimore. Through initiatives like the Violence Intervention Program and the Shock Trauma Center, we provide trauma-informed care and wraparound services to individuals affected by violence, helping to break the cycle of retaliation and promote long-term stability. At UMMC, we remain steadfast in our commitment to working alongside our partners, including the Baltimore City Health Department, local organizations, and community leaders, to build a healthier, safer, and more equitable Baltimore. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I look forward to working with you all in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Farrakhan.
Good morning, Chair Porter, Vice Chair Conway, and members of the Public Health and Environment Committee. My name is Islyn Moyer, and I have the distinct honor of being a nursing director for ambulatory services at University of Maryland Medical Center. At UMMC, we understand that access to care is a critical factor in improving the overall health and well-being of our communities we serve. To that end, we've developed a robust set of ambulatory efforts designed to improve access to care, enhance the patient experience, and expand our services to better meet the needs of Baltimore residents. As part of our commitment to the health of the Baltimore community, UMMC has made significant investments in expanding our network of outpatient clinics. These include primary care, specialty care, and urgent care centers strategically located throughout the city. This expansion ensures that patients have more access to critical healthcare services right in their own neighborhood. By increasing access to these services, we are not only reducing the burden on our emergency departments, but also ensuring that patients can receive timely, appropriate care for non-emergency conditions. This shift allows us to focus on preventative care, early interventions, and management of chronic diseases, which are central to improving long-term health outcomes. In addition, we are committed to embedding comprehensive care management into our ambulatory operations. This model brings wraparound services, including social workers, community health workers, and pharmacists into our care teams. Having this level of patient support ensures we're positioned to meet the diverse social needs of our patients, as well as their medical needs, ultimately leading to care that's patient-centric, focused on convenience, quality, and affordability. In partnership with our community and city leaders, we continue to innovate and improve how we deliver care, ensuring that our most vulnerable populations have a pathway to receive the support that they need. We are also proud to note that UMMC's ambulatory services are a critical component of our overall strategy to improve health equity and address the disparities that exist within Baltimore communities. We remain committed to expanding access to high-quality care and working closely with all of our partners to ensure Baltimore residents have the tools and resources they need to achieve better health outcomes. Again, thank you for the opportunity to attend today's hearing, and we look forward to continuing to work and collaborate with the Health and Environment Committee to meet the healthcare needs of Baltimore.
Thank you so much. And I see we also have two other prominent physicians from University of Maryland. As they come up to the dais, colleagues, I just want to just kind of share the reason why we're having this open dialogue. I have asked the institutions, community leaders, and business leaders to come and speak to us about what their vision looks like for public health. This provides us an opportunity for us to take what they're saying and really, really do impactful work through the committee. And so, as you're taking notes, begin to kind of scribe down some things that you want to specifically work on as it relates to public health and collaboration with these institutions. I'm going to call up Dr. Chuck Callahan or Dr. Orlando Wright.
Well, I'm not here on official capacity for the University of Maryland, but I just want to say I support what everyone else said. Islyn oversees our ambulatory services, but I'm just, as you know, you've come to our facility, Health and Recovery Practice, and I want to encourage folks that if they have an opportunity to see what we do and what Islyn mentioned as the type of work that we do. We're here with one of our interns from University of Maryland Baltimore, who was a social worker who echoes what the rest of the folks mentioned, and we want to show you the work in action. So, that's the piece for me, and I'll step away. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. And I'll also say that I'm not in official capacity, other than being a citizen of the city of Baltimore and really a fan of the overarching vision that I think that you've brought. That has to do with a recognition of an umbrella of services that will allow us to access or allow our clients and patients to access care who are not traditionally accessing that care, individuals who either can't or won't access through the traditional models. And that's the entire suite of place-based care that we've talked about, of which one small component is mobile health, but also school-based health, which we've talked about before, particularly looking at asthma initiatives in the schools, knowing how much that contributes to school absenteeism, as well as some of the retail options that the School of Medicine and UMMC are engaged in with Mondamin Mall and other places. In addition to the church initiatives that are happening, and Councilman President Cohen is involved with sort of shepherding some of those, but really the whole opportunity for us to reach out to individuals within the community under this place-based umbrella and then direct that care back to the brick-and-mortar places. I also think there's going to be an opportunity for us to recognize community health hubs that are somewhat partway between the traditional brick-and-mortar and individuals who are kind of experiencing homelessness and other things on the streets. So, happy to be a part of that conversation and that journey as we go forward. So, thank you for the opportunity to share it.
Thank you, Dr. Callahan. You said a lot in that short amount of time, and colleagues, that's exactly why, when we look at the Child Health Equity Act that I introduced, that's precisely why I started with that. Dr. Callahan was instrumental, and I'm going to brag on you a little bit, you were instrumental in really the widespread COVID efforts that we saw in the city and also the asthma breast mobile about five to seven years ago from University of Maryland. So, what he's speaking about, that place-based healthcare approach, is something that we're going to be taking very seriously on the committee as well. So, thank you so much, Dr. Callahan. We have Johns Hopkins.
Hi. Councilmember Porter and members of the Public Health and Environment Committee, thank you so much for an opportunity to speak with you today. I'm Dr. Vanya Jones. I'm an associate professor at the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. I'm a faculty member and researcher who has collaborated with different city agencies, and I now serve as the co-chair with the Health Department's Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Tamara Green, of the Baltimore Local Health Improvement Coalition, otherwise known as the ALHIC. In my role as the Assistant Dean for Community Engaged Research at the Bloomberg School of Public Health, I am working with Baltimore City community leaders and faculty at our school to promote continuous improvement for our partnerships with the city. Through these experiences, I have two points that I'd like to share with you. First, there are many examples of productive collaboration between city agencies and academic institutions to improve health. We've already heard of some. I'll mention a few that we're particularly engaged with at Johns Hopkins. Second, there are opportunities for us to do more to address the critical health challenges facing Baltimore, including by working with city council. Let me start with my first point on collaboration. Baltimore faces many health challenges. We've already talked about them, from overdose to infant mortality, from food insecurity to healthcare access. Academic partnerships are an important pathway to help understand and respond to these challenges. For example, for more than 10 years, the Center for Communication Programs at the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health has been a core partner of Be More for Healthy Babies, the city's successful initiative to reduce infant mortality and promote child and family health. The center has designed numerous outreach campaigns, including its successful ABC of Safe Sleep program. Faculty at the center have brought their experiences from around the world to Baltimore, and they're at work on this effort. Similarly, during COVID, we've already heard how important that collaboration was during COVID. A team from Jopaygo at Johns Hopkins helped to train the Baltimore Community Health Corps to provide contact tracing and vaccine support across the city. We were proud to be a part of the team that was led by the city, and that team kept Baltimore from being the worst of the pandemic experienced by other communities in cities across the country. Last year, the Urban Health Institute at Johns Hopkins teamed up with the Baltimore City Health Department and the Housing Department and others to host a major Social Determinants of Health conference focused on housing and health in the city. This convening led to a follow-up report with pathways to action based on the presenters and the discussion at the symposium, and I can provide you a link to that report. Today, Johns Hopkins faculty work at the Health Department in epidemiology, policy, serve on the opioid restitution board, and advise the mayor during the period of transition for the Health Commissioner. I highlight these examples because they provide a variety of the types of collaborations that exist between the Bloomberg School of Public Health and the city broadly. Be More for Healthy Babies is an example of expert skills being applied collaboratively. And the Social Determinants of Health Symposium shares how we bring together our diverse city to address concerns and highlight successes. And the work of our faculty highlights our commitment to supporting city agencies directly. Now to my second point, there are opportunities for even greater collaboration to support further progress on health. Let me mention three such opportunities. First, academic partnerships can help city government answer the questions of what is and, more importantly, what is not working. Rapid evaluations can help inform public investment and action. One way Johns Hopkins is hoping to promote connections between research faculty and public agencies is through the Johns Hopkins Urban Health Institute Strategic Consultant Grant Funding. This is a small fund of grants, providing approximately $10,000 to support faculty in developing projects with city agencies. In the application, the faculty member must describe how this work will support the city and identify a city agency to partner with on implementation. I lead this fund with Dr. Sadiya McQueef of the Health Department, and we're eager for more applications. Second, academic partnerships confide highly motivated and passionate students to support city efforts. Every year, more than 1,000 public health, medical, and nursing students volunteer to support the city through SOURCE. SOURCE is a special program at Johns Hopkins that works with more than 125 close and valued partnerships with nonprofit organizations. We also have programs to place our interns across city agencies, a process that we are now expanding to include city council. I got a little excited, so I lost my place there, but we want to include city council. I know some of our students have been working with city council over the past year, and we'd love to hear your feedback and be able to strengthen and grow this program in the future. Third, academic partnerships can bring successful ideas from around the world and the nation to Baltimore. For virtually any policy challenge related to health, we can bring a diverse set of faculty members, either via video conference or in person, in order to share ideas for what the city can do. If the committee, the council, and the administration are interested in pursuing those ideas, our faculty are highly motivated to advise or collaborate on implementation. I want to take a minute to thank you for your time and listening to me, and also thank you very much for leading a healthier Baltimore.
Yes. No, I know your work very well. I just want to say it's so wonderful to meet you in person and not reading your literature.
Oh, thank you.
So, yes, it's very nice to meet you in person.
Me too.
I just want to commend you all on the work that you are doing, particularly in the Be More Healthy Baby space, and I love that you all are engaging new practitioners into government. That translation piece is going to be very influential as we kind of navigate this post-COVID world. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. Now, next, we're going to hear from Angel Brown from NewWave.
Oh, this is good.
Oh, you want to go together?
Oh, okay.
And this is, for the record, sir, if you can share your name, Dame?
Hi, I'm Damon Marshall, owner of New Wave Health Services, CEO, along with my wife, Angel Brown, COO, co-owner of New Wave Health Services. We have a behavioral health program located in Baltimore City. We operate out of two offices. We have over 27 rehabilitation housing components to the program. We just purchased, you know, a new medical center that we're trying to open. I'm happy to be here. I just want to talk to ensure that we understand what's really going on in this community. So, I kind of want to be that representation for the community. I want this to be a committee, and I want to walk hand-in-hand with you guys so that this could really be a collaborative effort and not an effort where, because we understand some of the stigma that goes with behavioral health, substance abuse, and some of the things that's going on with many of the programs, so they're sort of this snitch. But I don't want good programs to get caught in the wide net that I'm sure is going to get cast out. So, for that reason, I felt as though me and my wife would be good representation to come here to speak on that. In my opinion and my experience, I think that we have been too reactionary, so I want us to get more proactive so that we can get ahead of some of these things and not behind. So, where we find ourselves breaking, not breaking, but unleashing these new laws, these new things, that's trying to capture everything in this net when it really isn't possible in the first place. So, that's one thing I want to speak on. Also, I'd like to thank everyone for coming to University of Maryland. I actually used to be a registered nurse at University of Maryland. I worked in pharmaceuticals. I researched and developed Adderall, XAR, Vyvanse, Pentazone. So, my journey is a little different than most. I'm born and raised in West Baltimore, Pennsylvania Avenue, so I started there. So, I'm pretty sure and I'm pretty familiar with the struggles that's going on in the inner city. So, I want to make sure that those people are taken care of because they don't have the voice to speak in these type of environments and scenarios. So, I want to make sure that I can bring some representation for them so that we can kind of get a pulse on what's really happening. That's about it for me. I don't know if my wife wants to have something to say. You want to come on up? So, thank you, guys. I'll speak later if there's an opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
And ma'am, if you can share your name for the record?
Good morning. I'm Angel Brown. I am the co-owner of New Wave Health Services. I'm super excited to be here because I am in dire need of getting information from everybody who is here so we can have a better Baltimore. Right now, our city is in crises with the opioid addiction crises, and I think that right now, a lot of people don't know exactly what is happening on the streets because they're not boots on the ground. Many of us who work in the behavioral health industry is really seeing a decline, and also, we're seeing that people are not being heard when it comes to what's happening in the industry. So, a lot of you may or may not know that right now, it's just like a freeze that's going on, whereas though providers are not being paid or being partially paid for services that we are helping with the citizens of Baltimore. And it's a scary time because in a few short weeks, if something doesn't happen, a lot of people are going to be flooding the streets of Baltimore, homeless, you're going to have more crime, you're going to have more overdoses, you're going to have a lot more to deal with. It's going to be a lot of stress on the ERs, it's going to be a lot of stress on the shelters. And so, I am anxious to hear what the plan may possibly be so we can all be on the same page to bring the charm city back into charm city. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Angel and Damon. And just to kind of give you all a little bit of background, so I've been talking with them for a few months now, and they've literally been sounding the alarm on the behavioral health crises that's happening in Baltimore with our substance abuse and mental health clinics and also our recovery homes in Baltimore. And I've been taking a very, they've been, you know, taking me under their wing and really giving me a very, very, very detailed approach of how harm recovery, I mean, not, excuse me, harm recovery, but harm reduction and recovery should be done, but also, what are some of the loopholes that exist within this current infrastructure? And we've been working hand-in-hand to not only to address those loopholes here in the city, city level, you'll see some legislation and some legislative oversight hearings come in the next few weeks, but also at the state level, sounding the alarm at the state level with these Medicaid cuts, with large looming cuts for behavioral health within our current budget, and also at the federal level, looking at what ways that we can make sure to not only prioritize all aspects of healthcare, physical, behavioral, substance abuse, and mental health, but making sure that we do it in a very dignified way that not only puts people back into community, but it puts people back into community the right way. We want to make sure that we are uplifting good operators and making sure that bad operators that are not doing what they are supposed to do, we make sure that we have a targeted approach to ensuring that they comply and also that they have quality assurance metrics in order to make sure that the people that they are serving indeed are healthy and continue to be healthy. So, I want to thank you two for working hand-in-hand with me over the last few weeks. It's been a very tough year for behavioral health, and speaking on behalf of my colleagues, we will work hand-in-hand with you through this committee to see how we can rectify some of those issues at the city level within our jurisdiction. So, thank you so much. I also want to call up Allison Behr from Ridgely's Delight, and thank you so much for coming from the district.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. Honorable Chair Porter, Vice Chair Conway, and distinguished councilpeople and committee members, my name is Dr. Allison Behr. I am representing the Ridgely's Delight Community Association here today. I am actually a two-time graduate of Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health, both with a master's in public health and a doctorate of public health. So, I have great passion for the work that this committee is going to do and for the city of Baltimore that I've called home since 2002. So, just to orient those, the committee members, Ridgely's Delight is a small community of about 120 houses that is bordered on the east by Russell Street, on the west by Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, and on the north by Pratt Street. So, we sit right in the heart of downtown, just west of the Central Business District. We are a small but passionate community of people who love city life and love living in Baltimore City. We're a very diverse population of people with all sorts of different social identities and students, working people of all income levels, and retirees. We really have a very diverse and committed community, and I've lived there since 2002. Since 2007, Ridgely's Delight, right there in the heart of downtown Baltimore, has been a food desert. With the closure of the Safeway that was on South Carey Street in Washington Village and the Save-A-Lot grocery store, which is now a Dollar General, the average travel time to a grocery store from our neighborhood, if you don't have a car, is around 20 minutes. We have to go to either Locust Point, Mount Vernon, Harbor East, or Canton. This, as we all know, has a generational impact on population health. Thank you. Thank you. It is something that I know the city has been working on for the entire time I've lived here, but we haven't quite found a solution to these food desert parts of Baltimore, and I'm hoping that this committee can continue to work on that effort. The second thing my community would like to raise as a real population health issue is the combination of sanitation, garbage control, and rodent control in Baltimore City. Between the increased winds that we're seeing in the city that's blowing trash all over, the subpar waste collection that results in trash not actually getting into the trash collectors and blowing around in the streets on the days that trash is supposed to be collected. And then, for our neighborhood, we have a lot of stadium events and people coming through the neighborhood and dropping their garbage, and it's blowing around. Contributes not only to an out of control rodent population, but a psychological impact on the population of living in an environment that is unclean and unenjoyable to get out and be physical in because our neighborhood spends a lot of time picking up trash that's blowing through our neighborhood. We actually have weekly efforts from the community association to go around and pick up the trash blowing through our neighborhood, and it's still all over the place, all the time. And the rodent issue is just growing and growing and continues to grow out of control. This is another thing that I know is citywide, and I would really like to reflect the population and community's needs to have these issues, which are really shared issues, be addressed by this committee as well. The third thing that I'd like to raise, in addition to, if I could say, all of the issues that have been raised by others who have testified, which I completely agree with. I know Baltimore is in a very tough place. It's, we have a lot of challenges we are facing. The third one that I'd like to raise from my community's perspective is the sidewalks and the sort of condition we find our sidewalks and how it impacts upon the population's ability to get out, be healthy, have, you know, have physical activity, and actually go to places like walking to the food stores that we are trying to find from our food desert. Our sidewalks have, are popped up, they're narrow, they've got tree roots that are causing them to disintegrate. As we have an aging population in our community that has increasing mobility issues, they are increasingly unable to feel safe walking in our neighborhood with the state of the sidewalks as they are. And of course, for young children and for families with strollers and other sorts of people with mobility issues, these sidewalks are just not meeting our community's needs anymore. And I know that this is also an issue that is felt around the city and is something that I would like for this committee to also consider looking into. Our vision is to have a community that can meet its needs locally, be physically active, develop a, you know, and drive our sense of community through being in healthy, clean, outdoor spaces that we can enjoy together. And I'm hoping that this committee can help us drive that not only for Ridgely's Delight, but for the city as a whole. And thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bear. And you brought three very, very key initiatives that I know we'll be focused on within this committee, particularly just from a sanitation issue. So, one of the major drivers that we instituted last term was having rat birth control and rat infertility methods. That's something that we've grown to see in major cities that we'll be taking a very deep dive approach on. I believe DPW is working through the procurement for that. And so, you should be able to see some sort of resolve pretty soon, hopefully. With regard to the food access issue, that was, you hit the nail right on the head. That was the primary reason why we worked together for the Price Right in Mount Clair Junction. Over 7,000 residents of those two neighborhoods, Pig Town, Mount Clair Junction, and going across the street to Ridgely's Delight, they are living in a food desert. And so, that jumbo fresh that we have over there in Mount Clair Junction is something that I know will be replicated throughout the district. Thank you so much, that was very, very touching. We have Kyle from South Baltimore. It's nice to see you off LinkedIn.
Thank you, yeah, we just connected. Good morning. I'd like to start by thanking you for calling this hearing. As you alluded to yesterday, the healthy functioning of a democratic government happens when the people's voices are heard and policy is shaped by their needs. And that's only possible when citizens participate in their government and hold their elected leaders accountable. While I speak this morning as a citizen, my remarks are delivered in the context of a former city health employee at the Baltimore City Health Department. I worked in the COVID-19 program, serving the homeless, disabled, and substance use disorder populations. I was responsible for mitigating COVID-19 outbreaks in facilities that house and treat Baltimore's most vulnerable populations. I'm proud of the work that we did. My team mitigated more than 450 outbreaks and tested thousands of people, the bulk of which occurred during a two-year period. My work brought me to every corner of our great city, and I am both grateful and honored to have been entrusted with this responsibility. Those of us who have chosen public service as a career do our work quietly. We do not seek fame or fortune. Standing here today is not something I thought I would do, but being a public servant expects integrity, doing the right thing because it's the right thing to do. Last year, the Banner published a story exposing the extent of fatal overdoses, more than 6,000 dead in six years, the highest mortality rate of any city in the country. City Hall and Health Department responded by irresponsibly claiming they didn't know, an indictment onto themselves, but we know this is not true. Baltimore's response to the fentanyl crisis began in 2015 by former Health Commissioner Wen, who led the country in writing a blanket prescription for lifesaving naloxone and forming an interagency coalition. The city knew what was happening in 2015, the city knew what was happening in 2016, the city knew in 2017, 2018, and 2019, but somehow, they stopped knowing. If they truly didn't know, it's because they chose not to know, and that's exactly what happened. In the late spring of 2021, after reading a series of articles in The Washington Post and The Baltimore Sun, I asked my bosses what the city was doing to address the overdose crisis, and the response I received was astounding. I was told that it was not Dr. Derazza's priority, that Dr. Derazza's only focus was COVID. There was a moment of bewilderment among us. Why was a public health crisis killing hundreds of people not a priority? My boss added something like, "Yeah, we don't know." We now know not choosing to address the fentanyl crisis was a critical error by former Health Commissioner Dr. Derazza and ultimately Mayor Brandon Scott. When you look at the Health Department's COVID-19 data, you will see 2,003 people died of COVID-19 in a four-year period, 2020 through 2023. But during the same four-year period, 4,141 people died of a drug overdose. In other words, twice as many people died of a drug overdose than COVID-19. Why did nobody in population health sound the alarm? Why did nobody advocate for more resources? Why did nobody in public service speak up? Allowing 6,000 people to die, the majority of which were black men, and the Health Commissioner, and the Mayors, and the overdose prevention teams choosing not to do anything about it was a public health failure. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I would like to submit my remarks for public record.
Thank you so much, Kyle. And I can assure you that the work of this committee, our first hearing is going to be a legislative oversight related to behavioral health. I hear you loud and clear, being a practitioner in this space for more than 15 years. We've seen these issues in Baltimore for some time. In my 37 years of life, I've seen substance abuse, I've seen it in my family, I've seen it in my communities. And I can tell you that every person on this committee, we have it in the forefront of our brain to work in collaboration with the administration, with the Council President's office, with community to co-create what that vision looks like. Particularly related to addiction and treatment recovery. I hear you loud and clear. Thank you. Last, but certainly not least, we have Brittany Banks.
Good morning. Dear members of the Public Health and Environmental Committee and Councilman Porter, my name is Brittany Banks. I'm a representative of the Pig Town community here in Baltimore City. I've been a Baltimore resident for four years. Opioid use disorder remains a serious public health crisis affecting thousands of Baltimore residents and devastating communities across the city. Medication-assisted treatment, including the use of methadone, has been widely adopted as a strategy to help addicts manage their addiction and reduce dependence on opioids. While these initiatives aim to mitigate harm, their long-term effectiveness and overall impact on a community require further evaluation. While these clinics can help stabilize individuals, it does not cure the addiction. It's a tool for coping and not healing. I believe that success depends on long-term retention and access to comprehensive support, which may or may not be lacking in many of Baltimore City treatment centers. Additionally, policymakers have proposed safe injection sites to reduce overdose death and to support addiction recovery. I strongly oppose the addition of safe injection sites in Baltimore City, whether supervised or unsupervised. These initiatives claim to save lives. However, I question their long-term effectiveness as they fail to address the broader damage inflicted upon communities that are forced to host them and the very people that they are trying to help. Where is the data proving that these programs work beyond just preventing overdoses? Some may argue that these clinics and safe injection sites do not increase crime and blight. But until undeniable data exists that the benefits outweigh the immense harm, these sites should not be allowed in Baltimore City. If Baltimore is to implement these measures, there must be clear evidence that they lead to positive outcomes beyond overdose prevention, ensuring that both individuals and the communities benefit from these programs. Overdose prevention should not come at the expense of our community's safety, stability, and future. Instead of abling drug use, we need real solutions that prioritize neighborhood revitalization, mental health, job training, public safety, and economic equity. So, my question is, will Baltimore enable addiction rather than solve it? Methadone has shown to have benefits in reducing use, but patients who stay in treatment long enough, but patients have to stay in treatment long enough to experience, and retention is one of the biggest challenges when you're evaluating methadone's true effectiveness. Studies indicate that about 57% of patients remain in treatment for 12 months, and this drops to 38.4% by four years. That means that nearly half of all patients leave before the first year is up, and the majority are gone within three years. Methadone requires the most structure, such as daily administration, and we know that this can be a burden for many addicts. Also, recent studies have raised concerns about methadone's limitation as treatment for opioid use disorder, suggesting that benefits may be less robust and inclusive than previously thought. The next point I want to make is that Baltimore's lower-income and predominantly black neighborhoods have been saturated with an overwhelming number of methadone clinics and dispensing alternative drugs, while wealthier neighborhoods like Phil's Point, Canton, Federal Hill remain mostly untouched by this burden. The uneven distribution of these facilities in historically underserved neighborhoods has exacerbated crime and public disorder, and we do not need a scientific research or data to show this. We are residents, we live here every day, we see it. It leads to open-air drug markets in areas such as Morrell Park, Mount Clair, and southwest Baltimore. Residents often witness drug transactions in plain sight, sometimes with minimal intervention from law enforcement. This fosters an environment of helplessness among residents as they fear retaliation if they report illegal activity. Drug dealers exploit the vulnerable and wait outside of treatment centers, knowing that their next customer will emerge quickly in search of the next fix. Meanwhile, used needles litter our parks, playgrounds, and sidewalks and create hazardous conditions for families and children. Baltimore residents are desperate to find solutions and have taken initiatives to improve public safety. For example, the Pig Town Neighborhood Association secured grant funding to install four Sharp's disposal containers throughout our neighborhood as a harm reduction strategy. One container is installed at Carroll Park because it was identified as a hotspot for needles. Our city is in crisis, our residents deserve better. Our children deserve safe parks, free from needles and human suffering. Our communities deserve policy that promote progress. This issue of drug activity in Baltimore is not new. It has persisted through multiple administration and past public servants failing to deliver real solutions. However, I would like to take the time to acknowledge and applaud Mayor Scott and Baltimore City for taking steps to hold pharmaceutical companies accountable in their role in the opioid epidemic by reaching settlements that will provide millions of dollars to fund to combat the crisis. These funds must be used wisely to find the right solutions that truly serve communities rather than perpetuate harmful cycles of addiction. 31 seconds, okay. It's my first testimony, okay. So, I urge the committee to consider the following strategies. Reject safe injection sites. Oppose legislation that brings these sites into our city. Focus on strategies that genuinely address the root cause of addiction. Equitable distribution of treatment facilities. Enforce stricter regulations to prevent oversaturation of treatment centers in specific neighborhoods to ensure equal distribution across the city. Also, the answer is not opening up another clinic or safe injection site. I believe people should receive holistic care and comprehensive support. So, please focus more on mental health services, employment opportunities, and affordable housing. And so, I believe that is my 30 seconds. And thank you for allowing me to testify today.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Banks, I just want to thank you for working in collaboration with my office. The grant that you mentioned came through my office. And so, I thank you for not only working in collaboration with the office, but also being a steadfast community partner, coming to the table with real solutions. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, committee members, just want to open up some opportunity for questions for, if you have any questions or comments of what is being said today, this is your time to do it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank our partners for coming. As someone who represents a large portion of the people impacted by the opioid crisis, it is imperative that we get this right. I say that because this crisis impacts not only people in the whiteout, but also in the black butterfly, because I represent Sandtown, Winchester, and also Hampden. So, I know that I have to get harm reduction for young men and women who are partaking in marijuana that's laced with fentanyl in Pennsylvania Avenue. But I also know there are people who are using fentanyl in Hampden and Dye. But also recognize, from the data that we've been given, there's a group of men that we have not been focused on, that we need to start focusing on because that will help us bring down the numbers faster and also looking at how we can support them. But from looking at it holistically, the supports have to be different. I thank you for bringing your perspective to the University of Maryland. I appreciate you guys. Near and dear to me is that you guys took care of my grandmother when she had a stroke, so I know about that community health approach, especially looking forward to seeing you guys get, I believe you guys are still trying to get a stroke unit. Hopefully, we can help you with getting that because for the public's awareness, stroke units allow for the immediate assistance with neurology to actually get to the person in time to make sure that they have a lot of brain life left. Unfortunately, that didn't happen for my grandmother. So, it's near and dear to me because I know that we have a high influx because of the opioid crisis impacting the availability of units to get to our elders and our seniors who are experiencing stroke. So, we have to think differently about how we approach that as well. This crisis does bleed over into other areas of our lives, where our young people have to play places that we have to have regularly clean, to actually having an idea to saying that maybe one day someone will not give up drugs. So, how do we help you with staying safe and staying alive? Those are hard conversations that we have to have as a public, and I'm thankful for your leadership on this, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilman Torrance. Councilman Dorsey or Parker?
Sure. First, Madam Chair, thanks for putting together this orientation, bringing in these guests. Actually, I just had a question if there's anybody here who can answer this. I was just curious and looked up online just now searching for a map of medical assisted treatment availability in the city. Does anybody keep a map? Like, is there a record of where all of the medical assisted treatment exists in the city?
I was going to say, behavioral health website.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, if you want to come to the podium.
Behavioral Health Systems, that's, yeah, okay. Behavioral health systems, that's, yeah, okay, got it. That's what, I kind of thought that was where I should turn.
Uh, no, let's actually get a answer to his question.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Or was it Angel? Did you want to come up?
It's fine.
Okay.
I don't know how many are in the city, but I will say that within a one-point foul radius of where I live, there are five MAT centers, three located on Washington Boulevard alone.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I'm sure that behavioral health systems could keep, could provide us a list. I was just curious if they, if anybody actually had a map.
Yeah, we have an upcoming legislative oversight hearing that will go through all of that, for sure.
And so it's a difference also between the MAT clinics, the behavioral health centers, and then the MAT clinics is totally separate. But for the behavioral health clinics, you can go on BHA website and you'll see the entire map. Also, we have to be accredited, so each accrediting body has a map as well to say how many is in a certain zip code. But I don't know what the difference would be for like, for, what is it, methadone or Suboxone.
Yep. Thank you so much, Angel. Anything? Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for being here with us today and for sharing your good work. There are two things I want to lift up. One, I really appreciated the discussion around Be More for Healthy Babies this morning. One of the key focus areas for that has been Patterson Park North and East, kind of census tract led by Baltimore Medical Systems for a long time. I've had the chance to be really active and engaged in that. They began in 2011. I began in the community in Highland Town in 2009. And so especially working alongside black families and Latino families there at the intersection of infant mortality and culture and poverty and the challenges that exist, it's been a great program and have seen really great results there in that targeted community. So really appreciate that work and excited to continue to support it. Glad it was brought up here. There's so many different things in public health that's really easy to lose track of focusing on one thing and missing out on others. And so our ability as a city and as a full range of service providers and community partners to be doing multiple important things at once, infant mortality, responding to pandemics, addressing opioid addiction, right, is critical for our ability to move forward as a city and support our residents. The last thing, the other thing I want to say there is that, and it's going to be certainly something I'll focus on in our work here as a committee, but just to name that, in addition to some of the geographic dispersion of and availability of behavioral health centers, there's also significant language and cultural access barriers. There's a really, there's a growing population, and it's hard to say how growing it is precisely because it is happening so much in the shadows of, especially of Latino men in the first district in southeast Baltimore who are experiencing addiction issues, which is often compounded by concerns around federal immigration policy, alienation at distance from home, oftentimes being isolated here and far away from family that may have been family and children that may have been left behind. So there's a lot of psychological barriers and sources of stress and pressure, and then also kind of the easy availability of whether it's alcohol or narcotics in the city, but often a problem that we have a hard time quantifying and also we have a hard time providing services for. So I want to make sure that as we continue these conversations, that that's front and center in terms of making sure we're aware of how the problem keeps shifting and shows up differently in different communities and different identities in our city.
Thank you so much, Councilmen, and colleagues. I just want to commend you all for sharing your sentiments. Not only do I believe we have much work to do, but I think we have willing partners that are sitting right here in the room to not only provide accurate information related to the industries, but also ways that we can really, really improve the city of Baltimore. I want to take an opportunity to turn it over to virtual testimony. Meredith Chaykin from Brooklyn.
Hi. Good morning. Thank you for having me. My video is not turning on. I apologize. Okay, great. Hi, thanks again. Good morning, Chairwoman Porter, Vice Chair Conway, and esteemed members of the Public Health and Environment Committee, and all the other attendees who care about these issues. I'm very happy to join you this morning. My name is Meredith Chaykin. I'm the CEO of the Greater Bay Brook Alliance, which is a community development corporation in Brooklyn, Brooklyn Park, and Curtis Bay neighborhoods in south Baltimore. And we're focused on improving the social, physical, and economic conditions in these communities. As was discussed earlier, your zip code is perhaps the most important indicator for your health than your genetic code because of the social determinants of health, such as housing, education, job opportunities, childcare, transportation. Eighty percent of what makes up someone's health is determined by what happens outside of the hospital or the health clinic that they attend. And we are working on addressing these key issues in 21225 and 21226, where 42% of children in these neighborhoods live below the poverty level. I very much appreciate the strong partnership that we've had with Councilwoman Porter and the 10th on trying to address these issues. In Brooklyn and Curtis Bay specifically, we are working to train and uplift our residents, businesses, and partner communities to develop and lean on some of the innovative programs that address the social determinants of health in our neighborhoods. Specifically, we have issues and concerns from the community around gun violence and other Part I crimes. Substance use, where we have 15.2 overdose calls per 1,000 residents compared to 8.8 for the city as a whole, and we know that those numbers for the city are already quite high. We have a very high rate of vacancy in substandard rental housing, a lack of food access, limited public transportation. We have nearly a quarter of our households do not have access to a car. We have a very large problem with trash, illegal dumping, and vermin that are making our public realm spaces unsafe and unhygienic. A disproportionate share of industrial zone properties and a disproportionate burden of heavy pollutants that lead to higher rates of asthma, obesity, lower birth rate, type 2 diabetes, and heart conditions in our neighborhoods. And of our residents in those neighborhoods, they're, you know, the people. And then a disproportionate concentration of methadone centers, which displaces other positive retail activity on our commercial corridors and engenders other kind of negative activity like open-air drug markets. We have been developing programs that are informed by and led by the stakeholders in our neighborhoods. That includes increasing at-risk youth programming, increasing community outreach to our most vulnerable residents. We're increasing the number of peer recovery outreach workers who are able to work with substance users in the community setting. We're using crime prevention through environmental design interventions to change the dynamics in our violence hotspots. We're building positive facilities like the kitchen at the Filbert Street Garden that will help increase access to healthy foods, improving pedestrian access along our major commercial corridors and our routes to school with sidewalk improvements, trees, lighting, and bicycle access. We're training our residents and supporting them to submit 311 requests for service and holding both the residents on those blocks and the agencies accountable for making those improvements. And we're working to improve the physical condition of our residential and commercial building stock so that there's healthy conditions for other outside investment. Our programs that we're using to address the social determinants of health are primarily funded by federal and state funds, which, as I'm sure you know, are under threat right now. And so we're trying to get creative, thinking about how we can sustain these programs in partnership with our residents and businesses. And I'm very much looking forward to the opportunity to elevate and address these issues at the policy level in partnership with this committee. It's a true opportunity to have this leadership from both Councilwoman Porter and the committee as a whole. Thanks for having me here.
Thanks so much, Meredith, and thanks for all the work that you're doing down in Brooklyn. You work in lockstep, not only just with the South Baltimore community, but also with Anarondo County as well. So we are crossing jurisdictional lines in Brooklyn and Brooklyn Park to ensure that legislators within Baltimore City are really taking helm of those issues, but also making sure that legislators in Anarondo County are coming to the table as well with their resources. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, we're going to wrap up this particular committee. I want to, just to underscore the commitment that you have from my office and those that serve on this particular committee. I know each one of these members personally. They have a great foundation for service within their communities, but also they want to make a real change within Baltimore. So please use us, please feel free to continue to talk with us. There will be additional ways to engage with us through task force and working groups in the coming future, where we're really going to be deep diving into a lot of these issues, the complexities of these issues, the existing city resources, and where we need to move forward with city, state, and federal-level resources in the future. Colleagues, I want to just to thank you for allowing me to chair my first hearing. This was an awesome experience. This is work that I've been doing for the past 15 years in the city of Baltimore, and it is literally my life's work. And so this is truly an honor to serve in this capacity, but also to work in lockstep with you all as well. So, thank you so much. Hearing is now adjourned.